February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order for the record, I'll note, we do have a quorum with Mr. Smith absent. I'd ask that you continue to keep Mr. Smith and his wife Tammy in your prayers. This evening, we have Matt Hankins, our Assistant County Administrator, to offer invocation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As we pray this evening, let's pray in the Spirit of Philippians four, verses four through nine. Rejoice in the Lord always. Again, I will say rejoice. Let your gentle spirit be known to all people. The Lord is near. Do not be anxious about anything, but in everything, by prayer and pleading with thanksgiving, let your requests be known to God. And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. Finally, brothers and sisters, whatever is true, whatever is honorable, whatever is right, whatever is pure, whatever is lovely, whatever is commendable, if there is any excellence, and if anything worthy of praise, think about these things. As for the things you have learned and received and heard and seen in me, practice these things, and the God of peace will be with you. Let us pray. Our loving and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today to do your work. We are honored by the opportunity to come together and practice our God-given rites to assemble, to speak, to petition the government. We pray that you will guide the board as they make their decisions tonight, that the decisions will all honor you. We pray for the people who are assembled here tonight. We pray for those who have lost loved ones. We pray especially tonight for Supervisor Smith and for his wife Tammy. We love and just our hearts go out to them for the difficult circumstances that they're in, and we pray dear heavenly Father, that if there is anything that we can do to reach out to them or to others in our community who have needs, that you will guide us and lead us as only you can, for it's in your name that we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Hankins, hand me the clipboard.
Thank you, sir.
First item on the agenda is Citizens Time. The first person we have signed up is Mr. Jack Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you all. I'm making my sort of semi-annual trip down here. Of course, I came to talk to you as usual about water. I know the last time I was here, you talked about there's a study underway or being made to determine the water need up Lebanon, and I take it that's probably going on. I've gotten some things in the mail, but I guess I would ask, is that still ongoing? Have we got a study made or any completion on it?
Moving at the speed of government.
I will get to it, Brian. Well, for your consideration, I want to give you some numbers that are authentic and correct. This was done at a cost, as I recall, of twenty thousand dollars or more for the town of Ruritri. Brian, you might remember that more, how much it cost to town. I don't, but I think it was in the twenty thousand dollar range. In fact, it's the same cost of study that has been conducted twice before and referenced in the past by other agencies. There's not a need for a third study, in my opinion, but update this study. But if you still desire for a third study, then you should use these two studies to confirm and check the new study. In fact, I beg of you to please do so. Be informed, because they're great studies, particularly this last one that was made. This study acts as a forty-page study addressing concerns and solutions. The study was conducted to address the feasibility of adding raw water sources to the existing water system. The recommended project provides a new water treatment and already existing but inactive water source, which was used several years by the town of Ruritri. I can remember when Staley's was used. To update it, it can be done rather easily by bringing in a pallet packaged water treatment plant at the existing site, plus add water to the vacant stretch of With County not being served. And it's sort of amazing, that little stretch is not being served. We came all the way from Pulaski to that point, and we just can't seem to get that other three miles and something. In addition to the project, includes connection to the Smith County Water Line, which is already into With County. They have two or maybe three houses in With County now that's being served by the Smith County Water Line. Now, this project will include the upgrading of the already in existence water source and the interconnecting of the line. The project includes a four hundred and twenty thousand gallon per day membrane treatment facility, plus fourteen thousand nine hundred feet of eight-inch pipe. This addition will provide a drinking water source for With County and eastern Smith County for the next forty years. Forty years, folks, is what I'm giving you a plan on. The cost estimate is eight hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. The piping distribution system construction improvement is estimated at four hundred and thirty-four thousand. Another three hundred and ninety-three thousand added for all other costs, including legal, engineering, and miscellaneous. All that is needed to put this plan in motion are enter municipal agreements to identify facility costs sharing between With County, Ruritri, and Smith County, and apply for funding from multiple sources. And there's several grants out there that are available. In fact, last week, many millions were extended for improvements to sewer and water by the Appalachian Regional Commission. The time is right, and it's now, it just takes willing minds to make it happen. I know an email's from Mr. Terry and myself. I think if With County tries this alone, you're just going to be deeper in debt and deficit and probably cost three times it. I mean, it's just, it's just a no-win situation for you. But let me tell you why it works for forty years. I think you're being led down the wrong path if thinking Smith County is going to be the benefactor for your current water problem situation. It's not. Population projections for eastern Smith County is from the year two thousand to two thousand and forty is five hundred and seventy-two people, net growth. That is projected people pulling by our E M. The water usage projections from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifty will only be a hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and ninety gallons increase. That will be a no-brainer from the figures given you previously. These are not Jack Weaver's figures. These are professional engineering figures. In fact, it's a very detailed report, and if any of you need a copy, sometimes I can make you a copy, or you can get it probably from county. I imagine Stephen has that. But this is it, and it goes into complete detail and tells you how you can pay for it. It also gives you four options. Now, this is a much simpler plan than what I think you guys are working on, so I'm encouraging you to take serious consideration of what I'm offering you. I'm offering you forty years of water, solving water problems in these three areas. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
Next person signed up is, I believe it's you, Ms. Meyer. I think the, I think the pen died on me.
Could it, could have, anyway. Okay, I'm here on a continuing, the continuing saga of the Speedway feedlot. We're getting into another spring. We're all going to be choking. There is manure up to your knees on the entire top of that hill, which is visible. I'd like you guys to please get in touch with DEQ. We need to get groundwater samples. We need to be concerned about contamination to local drinking water, even though a great many people there still are connected to a water system, there are people that do not have municipal water there. And then, of course, contamination of Cripple Creek that runs behind the feedlot area. That's a recreational stream for fishing and so on and so forth that goes down to Cripple Creek and goes to, through Ravens Cliff and ends up in the New River. So I'm asking you guys to once again, call, contact DEQ, and get some groundwater studies going on the area so we can keep track of what's happening or what is not happening and what is going on with our feedlot issue, because the last paperwork I have was two thousand and fourteen. All of a sudden, it's two thousand and twenty-one. We have seen nothing really happen. So it's about time, and I've created a paper trail. I'd like you guys to also create a paper trail with DEQ and CC me on all that so I can keep track of it, and we really need to step up to the plate. Speedway is over two hundred and forty years old, and there's no reason why the local Speedway hamlet should have to suffer the extensive damage from this feedlot operation that we, in fact, are not getting any positive revenues or whatever from. Okay, that's number one. The second thing, on behalf of all voters in southwest Virginia, I'd like to ask you guys to voice your displeasure with the Dominion voting apparatus. We're all aware of all the anomalies and all the things that have been happening. Virginia can do a better job. I would ask all of you to contact your state legislators and our federal legislators and ask them to look into and do a forensic study of all the Dominion stuff. And you guys are into, or let's say, what? You're members of the Association of Counties, and this is something that the Association of Counties should also be taking up, to make sure that all the votes from people in Virginia are counted accurately, and we don't have to put up with people that are not from here, perhaps causing problems in our voting system. And I'd also like to urge you to have a paper trail of that so we can ask whomever, whether it be the Board of Elections or any other, the Association of Counties, the congressmen, senators, and estate reps and so on, and get a paper trail going about that and everything that's happening with Dominion. Thank you so much.
Thank you. No one else signed up on Citizens Time? I'll close Citizens Time. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Have a motion.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice that any member wants to pull out? Hearing now will do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
So approved. Next item is approval of minutes of our previous meeting from January the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Entertaining motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion as second. Is there any discussion or corrections? Hearing now will do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
So approved. Next item is Department of Social Services report. Ms. Kim Ayers and your crew.
My crew, but not me. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm really excited to be here this evening and talk to you all a little bit about some things going on in our department, give you a little bit of an update. I understand it's a short agenda, and I have at least a two-hour time spot to fill.
Sure.
Okay, maybe not. So make it short and sweet, much like my crew.
You can stay here as long as you want to.
But you can take back some in March, right?
I see. Make it short and sweet like this bunch back here. Again, we're very excited to be here this evening and talk about something that doesn't include budgetary items, so that's always a plus. As you all are aware, we are a state-supervised, locally-administered entity here in With County. What that means is while we do report to a local board, we follow state, Department of Social Services, policy, procedures, human resources, and this is just a piece of the organizational chart of folks that we report to on the Richmond level. We have a regional director out of Abingdon, regional program managers, as well as our state partners that we report to as well. So always say it's like having twenty different bosses at any given time. At present, we have fifty employees. We have contract services right now, for now, for our IT and for our legal services. This is my twenty-sixth year here in Virginia. I did serve a couple of years, I say serve, I served a couple of years in West Virginia. And eighteen of my years in Virginia have been here in With County. With County is my adopted home, and I could not be more proud of being a member of the community here. And as such, it's been one of my personal passions and beliefs that we are a community resource agency, that we are an agency that does a lot of things that a lot of people just may not be aware of, because they haven't had a reason or a need to interact with our agency. But we do serve the entire community. Again, it's always been my belief that we never know where life's going to take us, and you never know when you may be on the other side of the window in our office needing some type of assistance, whether it would be a job loss or a catastrophic medical issue for which you may need to seek some guidance on medical assistance or such, or guidance or advice on how to handle an elderly parent who may need nursing home or some type of assisted living care. And as such, that is one of the, these are all issues that could happen at any point in any time with either our own personal selves or friends or family members. So again, we do serve the entire community. Here in With County, as you know, we enjoy a lower poverty rate and unemployment rate than many of our neighboring localities. That is something that I know we are very prideful of. Forty-four percent of With County citizens still fall below the poverty guidelines or are working. They're employed, but they're still struggling to make ends meet. Life can be really hard. I think we've all seen that during the pandemic in particular. What that translates to is out of our twenty-eight thousand four hundred and eight, so, citizens as reported in the last census, nine thousand six hundred and seventy-six citizens, or roughly one-third, received some type of assistance through our department during state fiscal year two thousand and twenty. And that just includes medical assistance, food assistance through the SNAP program, or temporary assistance for needy families. Just those three programs, that many citizens availed themselves of our services. Some of the programs that we run, ones that most people are generally familiar with, include SNAP, the former Food Stand program, which is the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. During the first piece of the pandemic, we saw a hundred and fifty percent increase in applications coming through our office because of job losses and such associated with everything that's been going on in the world in the last almost a year at this point. In the last six months, we've seen two hundred and ninety-three new cases, just on the families and children's side, and that doesn't count the processing of applications. Those are just ones that were eligible for services. Between two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, we had a significant increase in Medicaid applications, and with the pandemic, we have seen even more applications come through, kind of waiting on those final numbers as we hopefully are going toward the end of this pandemic piece. So we do have a medic help assistance program with Medicaid and FAMAS. We have Temporary Assistance for Needy Families program, which is a short-term assistance for folks that are in need, and child support enforcement can get involved to help recoup those funds on behalf of the state. We have a VIEW program, which is the Virginia Initiative for Employment, for Education and Work, where we help people that are either not working or who are in school either find jobs, help transition them to employment, or help them, help support them through training programs. And that's been a robust program in the past and one that we've seen a lot of success with. We have Energy Program, where we help folks with fuel assistance, cooling assistance, and crisis assistance. Childcare Program. An interesting program that you wouldn't necessarily associate with our department is VJ triple CA. That is the Virginia Juvenile Community Crime Control Act program. And so we have a person in our office that receives court referrals for home electronic monitoring and community service for juveniles. Mr. Cook probably worked with that program some when he was in the school system. I'm sure Mr. Bott is very well aware of that program through With County. But With County has managed that program for about twenty-some years. It's not one you would normally think that would be run through our department, but we do that one. Other programs that are more familiar to everyone would be foster care. At present, we have forty-one kids in foster care. That is up a little bit from state fiscal year two thousand and twenty. Four adoptions pending. We've had a lot of adoptions in the last couple of years, and I'm pretty excited about that. Child Protective Services, something that we have a lot of involvement with, and in state fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we had six hundred and thirty-one kids in our community that were a part of Child Protective Services reports. During the pandemic, our caseload has been roughly the same as it was prior to the pandemic, but in the last year, we have seen more intense cases of child abuse and more complex ones that have involved law enforcement. Sub exposed infants continue to be a concern that we have been involved with as a community. We have some, like, task force involvement between our department, Mount Rogers, and the hospitals, trying to work through sub exposed infants and such. And just to kind of give you a picture, in one of the first months of the pandemic alone, we had twenty-eight new referrals that included seven, twenty-eight new cases that included six of them included criminal charges and five children that came into foster care. And that's just for one month earlier in the pandemic. For our adults, we do run an adult protective services program. We had about a hundred and fifty-four investigations last year that involved elderly or disabled adults that we were involved with. And the same thing that we've seen during the pandemic that we've seen with children has been an increase in the intensity of the cases and the level of court involvement. We have had several court involvements involving elder abuse, more so than we've seen in the past. We also are responsible for about seventy guardianship cases right now, and we do also run a program through adult services where we provide companion insurer services for people who are eligible, who need some help with assistance actually in their home to try to keep them from having to go to a nursing facility. We do have a fraud program, and we also have a prevention and in-home services program where we work with about thirty to forty families at a time, trying to prevent kids from coming into foster care. And one of the programs that we've had the most fun with here recently is our Shop with a Cop program. We partnered with law enforcement, and that was actually Mr. Bott's suggestion during a board meeting several months back, because we were needing to think through how to do a Christmas program with the community during a pandemic and do it differently than what we've done before. So Mr. Bott suggested that we reach out and talk to Major Klein and State Deputy Foster about partnering, and we were able to do that. And if you ever want to have a great day right before Christmas, go watch Shop with a Cop at Walmart. It was an absolute joy. We served over a hundred kids, and it was just an amazing day. So we really appreciated being able to continue community involvement, but just in a different way than we have before. A couple of other things that are a little different about our agency is by code, we operate emergency shelters. Like I said, that is actually something that's codified, and with Mr. McCabe coming on board, we've been meeting to talk a little bit about how we're going to handle things here in With County, and with him being a true set of fresh eyes, it gives us an opportunity to see what's been done before, what we might need to do differently, if anything. So he's been working with my office and myself real closely with figuring out shelter kits and sheltering and, you know, emergency disaster response. We really appreciated his assistance with that. Another piece of our office that's a little bit different from other local offices includes the reimbursement piece. With our agency, of course, the county fronts our expenses, and we have an eighty-four point five percent reimbursement on administrative overhead, and some program areas, a hundred percent reimbursement from the county. So there are some ways, and my board has had a lot of discussions about ways to maximize those returns back to the locality. So that's always kind of an interesting piece during our budgetary process to see what we can, how we can maximize the state and federal dollars that run through us. And just kind of want to wrap up with this. During state fiscal year two thousand and twenty, the Board of Supervisors, the county, invested a little over one point seven million dollars into our budget, and there was a return revenue to the locality of eighty million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars. And that is a compilation of the SNAP dollars, the Medicaid dollars, childcare, adoption assistance. Folks who adopt children may be eligible for a stipend from the state or federal government. And so, you know, all those dollars would be returned back to the community. And with the pandemic, our federal government changed some things for families that were receiving SNAP benefits and kind of gave them a maximum allotment during the pandemic. And then families that weren't, may not have been eligible prior to the pandemic due to some relaxation of the rules, became eligible during the pandemic. So I'm really interested to see what those dollars are going to look like when my next locality report comes out for next year, to see that economic impact back to the community with those changes. As far as, another piece about the pandemic, I'd like to say is just a big thank you for the support from the Board of Supervisors for the expenditures through the CARES Act. We have had the good fortune of not having to close our doors to the public. We've continued to operate on-call twenty-four-seven. We've seen everyone who has come into our building. I am very thankful, very grateful that I'm part of that one point nine percent. I believe Mr. Hankins was the latest figure on people who have been fully vaccinated. Many of our staff have chosen to be vaccinated, and many of us have had our second round of vaccinations. If you haven't had your second one yet, be prepared. You might be sitting down for about twenty-four hours afterwards, but we will take it. If that is the worst of it, we are happy to take that. We have many people who've had their first, waiting on their second, and just a handful, maybe three or four people that for one reason or the other were able to get into one of the other clinics that are waiting their first ones. But the health department has been really good to work with through all of this, so hopefully we will have everyone vaccinated that wants to be vaccinated and have that process kind of moving along. Our vehicle that we receive through the CARES expenditures is awesome. We're very happy to show it to you anytime. I offered it to Mr. Bear for, to take out for a test drive sometime, but it does allow for the social distancing. We were looking for a new one. We ended up with a used one, had a little over twenty thousand miles, got a really good price on it, and has captain's chairs in the middle of it. So the third row seating is much more accessible than a lot of vehicles with traditional third row seating and a bench seat in between. So it does allow us to transport kids and others with social distancing practices in mind. And the mitigation strategies that we are using for in-office and outfield safety with the use of PPE, our desk barriers, and then all the supplies that we have purchased through the support of the county, we're putting it to use, and again, we're very, very appreciative for all of that. The last thing I'd like to share about our office is another program that we manage, but we have some changes going on right now. Our CSA coordinator, Ms. Ramsey, is leaving us for another position elsewhere, so we are kind of dealing with all of that right now, but that is the CSA program, and that is the Children's Services Act. And the CSA program began nineteen ninety-three, nineteen ninety-four, some legislation was passed where the major community players, Department of Social Services, Department of Juvenile Justice, Department of Education, and Community Services Board, had all their pools, all their funds pooled, and community teams were developed in each locality. And someone has to manage that. So we manage that for this locality, different agencies, different localities do it a little bit differently, but DSS does it here. And that pool funding is for at-risk children that are mandated to receive services, such as children that are in foster care, children that are at risk of entering foster care, children that are receiving special education, private day placements, or residential-type placements. At present, we have sixty-four kids that we are serving in the community. That number could change, go up and down, either way. We've seen fluctuation over the years, but in general, where we're at right now budgetarily is about where we've been for the last couple of years. Like I said, that, the CSA program is coordinated by DSS employee, and they coordinate the staffing of these cases, helping community partners for family assessment, planning team, FAP team meetings, and the FAP team recommends services, and the community policy and management team, I chair it, Mr. Bear sits on, that team with other community agency heads who are designees, and our role is to approve the funding. other community agency heads who are designees, and our role is to approve the funding. In some cases are some sufficient. Foster care cases or special education IEP placements are almost, I mean, they're pretty much non-negotiable for approval, but we do talk about additional services that could be available to the family to help ameliorate issues. So like I said, the budget can and generally does fluctuate a little bit. And while it's included in our operating budget, it's not a dollar amount that we control, but we can forecast. And that is where Mr. Bear's involvement on the team is just crucial and greatly appreciated. I think Ms. Thomas was going to share a brief update where we are with our budget and provide you some specific figures, but on my end, I just want to say thank you for all the support. I can talk for another hour and a half if you really want me to. I'm very passionate about my job and the things that we do at my office and just our community. You know, just during the Christmas season, I mean, we're in a pandemic. People have lost jobs. People have had a really tough time struggling with paying their own bills, and the community just poured out their love for kids and other citizens monetarily with toys. I mean, we just kept getting money to us and to the sheriff's office. We just have such a wonderful giving community, and it takes all of us. And our each, you know, each of us have a role in in what we do, and with us, you know, my door is always open. I invite each and every one of you to please come sometimes and sit down and talk with me more about any of the program areas, or just take a tour of my building, and let me, you know, introduce you around or answer any questions you may have. So our door is always open, and we're always happy to share a little bit about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you for everything you all do.
Thank you.
Amy.
It's been a very interesting two and a half years of being back in with county. Nobody could have predicted everything that changed and changed so quickly with the pandemic, but I couldn't do it without the support of my board, the Board of Supervisors. I have a great staff and my administrative team back here. They they do a really great job. And Mr. Bear, I can't say enough about Mr. Bear and how helpful he has been to our agency, both during the transition before I came and even since I've been there. We do appreciate him.
And Kim, before you take off, just one thing, and you kind of mentioned it, but you talk about Christmas and kids. It warms everybody's heart, but one thing that really warms my heart was having to be Circuit Court one day, and a fraud investigator, fourteen thousand dollars that he got back from a fraud case. And he, you know, and I know we've spoke, but he really does a good job in on these fraud cases, getting fraudulent claims, getting the money back for the county. So while we're talking about things, it warms your heart.
He does a good job, and if I could just say something real quickly about him, it's two things. I did look at the numbers as I was preparing for tonight, and the last numbers for recoupment were around seventy-seven thousand dollars. So he has, we have a robust fraud program. The other thing about him is he was a very good poach from another agency, and I want the best and brightest and, you know, the people that I've been able to bring in since I've been there. Some have worked out, some have not. The ones that have worked out, I'm very proud of and very glad that we have had the ability to bring people in, pay them a professional wage, and steal from another agency.
Well, and that was the second thing I was, that was the second thing I was going to touch on is certainly Ms. Ms. Ramsey, and she's done a great job, but when you live by the sword, you die by the sword. And there's Miss Holliday trying to hide back there. Poached on to others as you would want poached on to you, I guess.
Well, since you brought it up, we are very pleased to have Crystal and her knowledge from her time with the county administration office in our office as well. And we have, and you know, in the last couple of years, like I said, some have worked out, some have not, and the ones that have worked out, we're very pleased about that we have been able to bring in people with experience from other agencies or next door.
This is actually the first time she's been allowed back in the building. It's good to see her.
We we give her a hard time, and we tried to give her back to Bruce a couple of times. And we've tried to send her back to Bruce, but now Bruce isn't there for us to to use that as a threat on her, so we'll have to find something else.
Thank you.
Most of you know me. My name's Brenda Thomas. I'm the fiscal manager for DSS, and Stephen asked me just to give you a rundown of where we are on our budget for our local spending. This is DSS. We run three different budgets. We've spent about fifty-five percent of our local funding so far. We expect to have an overage, and this is excluding our cost allocation of around fifty-five, fifty-six thousand dollars this year. For CSA, we've spent around fifty-four percent so far. We have no way of knowing if that's going to pan out, but all I can do is a straight-line projection. We expect to have around forty-seven thousand dollars left using a straight-line projection, and this is of local funding. But usually, Kimberly's right, we spend around one point nine. I think one year we spent two point two net in the CSA, and that's one budget line that we cannot manage. We can manage our DSS, but not CSA. I'd love you to come over. I can show you our budget for three different ways that we reconcile each month, and I appreciate everything you do, boys.
Thank you, Brenda. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Thomas?
I will comment. They do a good job of managing their budget, as Ms. Bear talked about. CSA is unknown, and from the FAP team to Community Management Policy Team do look at making sort of pretty much services are mandated and meeting the requirements to try to keep costs under control. She's correct. It's a number that we put in there every year based on historical expenditures. Y'all know, I wrote up, I don't remember which county it was, but they they were getting ready to have a public hearing, the public county administrator saying that they were mending several hundred thousand to our, to their CSA budget, just to call it up, the number of cases and kids and situations they've had. So it is unknown, but the cases they already had is a good job of trying to address and control the cost and trying to match all the federal and state dollars where they can. I appreciate their work, very convoluted budget with states and federal and local match in there, but I won't answer any of the questions, but I'll let Brenda answer.
Does anybody else have anything, Ms. Thomas?
No, call me anytime. You can come over.
I know you like to talk numbers.
I know. Thank you. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Ms. Eldredth? I, you have anything?
I have.
Well, I, I felt, I felt the need to pick on you, and congratulations, Ms. Eldredth, is the proud mother of the Virginia Farm Bureau Young Farmer Achievement Award. Is that correct? And third in the nation. So for for Mr. Matthews, so I could never get him up here to congratulate him, but since you're here, we'll recognize you. Thank you.
I think that's my last.
Absolutely. All right, moving on in the agenda, the next item is County Administration Staff Reports. We have Mr. Don Chris from the Water Department to explain to us the COVID-19 municipal utility relief. And I hope he does a better job than the information that I read through.
Still figuring that one out, but in short, we had applied for a grant through DHCD, which was the COVID-19 Municipal Utility Relief Fund. And what that was set up for was for municipality municipalities, water utilities, water and wastewater utilities, to help some of their customers who have fallen in arrears on their accounts due to COVID-19-related issues. So what this money does is allocate it to the county. If we, if the board chooses to accept it, which like our recommendation would be that we do so, is we receive the money. If someone falls into arrears on their account, they have to be at least thirty days in arrears on their account, then we have, then we have the the capability to take that information. They have a form that they fill out, and we see if they qualify for the COVID-19 relief. And if they do, then we can help them out with their utility bills. So that's kind of where we're at. And Stephen, I guess you've got the the whole thing in there.
Yeah, entry package started on sixty-nine is is the letter, certification of receipt of fund. Don gave a very good summary of it. Nothing with this program is simple, nothing with the state law changes of utility disconnect moratorium is simple. While it, in concept, sounds very simple, the whole program is very difficult. This part of it, the relief fund, is actually the simplest part of it. We've got to make sure all of our policy procedures are in place to handle that, and we've got to develop a form that they can fill out. We have to find ways to verify and if they can find those, certify the individuals that are COVID-relief situations that are eligible for the funds to go forward. On the municipal relief, staff recommendation would be to recommend accepting the grant award and authorize the county administrator and wastewater, water and wastewater director to sign it. Unless we come across any other hurdles that fall within the table, we feel like we should back out of it, but they need it, I think, next week is the deadline for the municipal.
Sixteenth, I believe, fifteenth or sixteenth.
So move. I have a motion to second. Any questions or discussions? You're going to have to get with it. I just have one question. Is it open to businesses or is it just individuals?
It is, and it's, the way I read the the fund, it's up, it's up to the county or who's administering it to decide, you know, what's a fair amount to split up between everybody. So we will have to consider that, yes.
Does anybody else have any questions? Have a motion to second to accept and authorize Mr. Bear to sign the documents for the municipal relief fund, do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Hi.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Chris?
If you all want any questions or anything on the annual report, he's got a full report in there breaking everything out unless you all have any questions. Where we are, the government engagement.
I will say that, you know, that as part of this utility relief fund, it did lead us down the path of finding the state requirements on the disconnection moratorium. So that's a whole separate, whole separate legislation that's in the state budget that we found, and I put the details in my report, but just briefly, you know, we just, we received that notification that the governor signed legislation which prohibits disconnection of service. Utility must notify all customers who are at least thirty days in arrears of the disconnection moratorium, which may be by bill insert or bill notice. So we're trying to work out the details of how we're going to do this and work this into notifying our customers, but in short, we won't be doing any disconnection until the moratorium is lifted. It also requires us to set up a payment plan for customers that can show us that there's a COVID-related issue that they can't pay their water bill. It also prohibits us from charging any additional late fees or charges or penalties that we normally would. This is totally separate from the utility relief fund, but it kind of goes hand in hand. So so if a customer, you know, says, you know, we can't pay our bill, we're going to issue, we're going to try to get them to set up a payment plan to pay what they can, because the utility relief fund is a one-time deal. So if Joe customer can't pay his his water bill this month, he could apply for that, but it's only going to cover one month. So it's to their benefit to set up a payment plan through us and pay it as long as they can or set up a minimum payment. And then toward the end of, you know, that six months or whatever the payment plan period is, or if they get caught up, then they can apply for the utility relief fund money, which will cover their expenses or cover their outstanding debt. So it's kind of a complicated issue. We're still working through it, but we'll do our best, and I think we still have to consult with legal counsel on some of it, but that's the short of it, I guess.
The challenging part of it is, is it's written like it's a one-time expense, but it's really recurring monthly expense. So when somebody can't pay the thirty-dollar fee, the thirty days out, you show, tell them that they can set up a payment plan, and the payment plan is supposed to be a minimum of six months and a maximum of twenty-four months. So we tell Mr. Warren, we'll set you up, you know, a payment plan, pay that forty dollars, five dollars a month over eight months. But then one month later, he still owes forty dollars for his next bill that comes in. So he'll pay forty on that plus five dollars on his payment plan. Well, then if he can't pay forty on that, you know, you set up another pay, and it, everyone is trying to come up with how you set it up and keep the payments coming in and set up payment plans for what's in arrears and stuff. That's the part that makes it.
And we don't really have a.
One-time charge. You know, but with all these taxes that we're doing these, it's a problem. It's a whole lot easier to manage something like that.
Absolutely. We don't really have a system, an accounting system, that we can just plug it into, you know, and, you know, we'll take some manual entry or Excel spreadsheets to keep up with however many of these we we end up with. You know, we'll help out everybody that that we feel like they're in need, and that kind of puts it back on the county to determine that, but it's a pretty vague form that they fill out, and you just have to take people at their word and hope we're helping out the right, the right folks and do the best we can, so. There's any other questions?
And I apologize, I skipped over your report to the COVID thing. On the, we were talking earlier, Mr. Weaver talked about the the study. The way I'm reading this, the the actual study's been done, we're just waiting on.
Yeah, we, just to give us some context, Smith County initiated with with county and the possibility, possibility of an interconnection. And I believe we've received or with, in addition to Smith County, some Mount Rogers funds to pay for the PR. So we initially met with Mr. Carter, who was the county administrator then. The idea was they would like to see what it would take to get water from from our point to Smith County and determine what those cars, costs are, what the out-of-pocket expense would be to them, to us, and establish a water rate, and see what, you know, see what the end result is. And tweeted in his words, you know, we'll see what the cost is, and then we'll decide who who straws it out of, whether it's with counties or whether we, you know, they work something out with rural retreat. Of course, we'd have to be a part of that because of the the water mains running through with county, so that's in the process. We've kind of gotten the final, not the final numbers, but we've got the cost estimates narrowed down, and I think we are at the point now where we're establishing a water rate and what that would, what our cost would be to get the water to Smith County.
And and Stephen, I know the the town retreat sent a letter. Do we have them on the agenda for the Water Committee coming up or?
We had them on the agenda for the last Water Committee, and I'm able to get them on there. If they can make the next committee, they're certainly welcome. We'll follow up with them and see. I do know that the engineer that's doing the study met with them two weeks ago, I think it was, to just talk to them about them being the source of water and the eligibility of the source of water there. Be aware of the the studies and the reports that have been done previously as well, so I've not got confirmation, but I did get a request and did invite them, that they're welcome to come and join our water.
And that was, is that, okay. Sorry, I can't remember what month I'm in. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Chris? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business. We have the With Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement with Clockner Penoplast.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, back in November, you all approved the performance agreement. Uh, Clockner came back with a huge revision. County attorney has a huge revision. There were not any, uh, I guess, what I would call major changes they did out on the very end of it, uh, on the miscellaneous abilities to sign this agreement, uh, basically the company merger or how it changes assets. They did put in their, um, if you remember the, the, the original agreement, there was a, a blank on the head count. Basically their head count is as of, uh, a total of two hundred and sixty-three and they will be adding twenty-six jobs on top of that. Uh, the request, uh, the board authorized signature of the board agreement has handed out to you.
Entertainer motion to authorize Mr. Bear to sign the agreement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, have a second, any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved. Next item on the agenda is the With County Rules of Procedure Amendment. Mr. Bear, I'll let you explain that.
Yep, um, the chairman of the board would be wrong that, uh, a, a rule did not really address the, uh, ability to meet by form electronically, uh, as allowed during the disaster as our continuity of government ordinance. Uh, what you see in front of you is an amendment, uh, proposed, uh, by the county attorney to add section five point three point one, uh, to the, um, rules of procedure. Uh, by the rules of procedure, we're not able to vote against the fifteen, uh, but need you all to firm. Go ahead and put this on the agenda for the next meeting to vote and adopt this amendment. So I would recommend a motion to include the five of the procedure for the next meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, sir.
Moving on to new business, we have the vacation on the right of way request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I recommend, uh, go ahead and start a public hearing for March ninth, Vacation of Right of Way.
Entertain a motion to, if I can find this here. Entertain a motion to set the public hearing for March the ninth, twenty twenty-one. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Family First Coronavirus Response Act Extension.
The chairman, I have a copy of the act in there and, and basically the leave requirement or the leave of, of abilities associated with that expired as of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty, but they did allow for, um, companies, localities, individuals to extend the paid sick leave out through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, basically, uh, what I am requesting and recommending is that we do approve the additional two weeks up to eighty hours of paid sick leave, uh, deployed regular rate, uh, paying employees that are unable to work because they are quarantined or under, or under the devices of the diagnosis for having the COVID nineteen. And I would request that, uh, the board approve the extension of that through March thirty-first.
Entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Virginia Department of Health Local Government Agreement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what you have there is our annual agreement. It's, it's based upon our budget as approved, um, July first, two thousand and twenty. In order to the predecessor that, uh, sat on board prior to you, but you always complained that it usually took six months before we ever got this agreement and the health department to be approved. Uh, but basically we do this annually every year. Uh, the amount shown on it or the item motion for me, and that is on page one, uh, that shows the local funds of three sixty-six, one sixty-six, and that is consistent with our budget for this year. And, uh, would recommend approval of the agreement with the.
Entertain a motion to approve the agreement as presented. Have a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will point out, I appreciate Mr. Taylor with coming today just to pick up any questions about that.
There's, if I'm understanding right, the, and I don't remember if it was General Assembly or the governor, has proposed a, a different funding formula.
Yes, uh, I.
That would take some of it off the locality.
There is a, there is a revised funding formula, uh, in fact, there's a printout that's laying on my desk. Um, we talked about the regional managers meeting the other day. As proposed, uh, most of the counties in our area have actually seen a decrease in their required, uh, local effort, but not sort of how it'll file a breakdown of that will come. There are, I want to say twenty-some, twenty-nine local companies that will see an increase, uh, in there. But until we know the final budget numbers and all that.
Does anybody else have any questions? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item is surplus sheriff's department vehicle. Mr. Bear.
As requested, you all will make a motion to declare this vehicle surplus. And authorize the transfer to Rotary Volunteer Emergency Services. So if a major client is finished taking everything out of it, it's good to go, we will turn it toward you.
Make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
I'll abstain because it's my old vehicle. I don't want to complain that it breaks down.
Aye.
Aye.
He didn't tell me that part of it.
So approved.
Can we just go to second? Uh, Mr. Chairman, before we move on, uh, out of new business, Mr. Hankins does have one additional item that you all will allow in addition to your agenda.
Mr. Hankins?
Yeah, I have in front of you a memo, uh, detailing a, a new grant that we received from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management Services. Uh, it's a grant of forty-nine thousand eight hundred and four dollars. Uh, it does require a one-to-one match. We submitted this grant, um, the funds have to be spent by December, but we submitted it, uh, to, uh, help complete your comprehensive plan. You had money in the budget this year to, to do that, uh, thirty thousand dollars, so we can use that toward the match. Uh, would require that we, we budget, uh, just under twenty thousand dollars next year. We are meeting with, uh, the, uh, firms that are applying to do the comprehensive plan, uh, later this week and interviewing them, so we'll have a better idea of what our costs are. But essentially you're going to get your comprehensive plan, um, paid for largely by the state, um, as long as we, uh, undertake a, a few, uh, extra things that we wouldn't include in a comprehensive plan, making sure that we reach out to certain, uh, communities that might not necessarily, uh, participate in a, a planning process like this or that have traditionally been underserved. So as long as we do that and account for some future pandemic planning and, and health emergency response, um, we, we get some extra funding from the state to help with the process.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the award and authorize Mr. Bear or his designated, designate assigned the acceptance.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I will say a, uh, compliment, Mr. Hankins, along as, uh, just one of those that sort of slipped through the cracks, came up at the last minute. Mr. Hankins was able to formulate a gratification to get it in quickly. Uh, we were both having a grant right there and they sent back the book, that's the people on the stage. He got those in and we got the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to board reports. First one is Budget Committee. And I believe it was, you want to read that?
I'll read that, Mr. Chairman.
It's usually Mr. Smith that.
Yes, sir. Uh, the Budget Committee met on February second, twenty twenty-one and makes the following recommendations. Uh, the first one is to transfer sixty-five dollars from the state asset forfeiture account to the general fund and to amend and appropriate the same to account number twenty-two oh one dash four fifty-seven zero fifty-five.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion? And just to clarify, Mr. Bear, that's for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Yeah, that's correct, sir.
Does that elicit any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
Uh, the second recommendation is to amend and appropriate thirty-three thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars to thirty-five oh six consolidated dispatch for the two additional dispatchers approved at the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second, any questions or discussion? Mr. Bear, are we, are those positions close to being filled or?
They are advertised and going through candidates and the, and the funding here is just for five months for the remaining.
Anybody else? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So.
Third recommendation to amend and appropriate forty thousand dollars to account nine thousand dash four seventy-two thirty-four, capital projects as a match to the Rescue Squad Assistance Fund grant to purchase a new ambulance for Landmine Rescue Squad.
Any questions or discussion on that?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman, they had received an eighty-twenty grant, uh, for the Rescue Squad. We gradually have forty thousand dollars funded. We used that forty thousand to prepare that funding for the Rescue Squad participation. They still were able to get their grant for another Rescue Squad, so we are appropriating our twenty percent match.
Anybody else? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved.
And the fourth and final recommendation is to amend and appropriate one hundred and four thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars to account three-two-zero-two-six dash four-six-one-four-hundred, Withville Fire Department, for the annual payment as agreed to in the February twenty twenty Emergency Services Agreement.
Any questions or discussion on that? That's the annual payment. We'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from Budget Committee, Mr. Terry?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to Board of Supervisors time, Mr. Cook. Uh, the only thing I got is, um, the, uh, green box workers and the safety gloves for them. Are they still going to unload people's stuff or are we getting them the gloves or what are, what are we doing with that?
They are employees of B and M Recycling and we usually try to help support P P D or equipment like that goes if they need it. Since they're providing most of their equipment, but, uh, I will contact Philly and work with B and M and see if they're providing them, uh, necessary equipment to help them.
I have none now. Ms. Lawson?
The only thing I have, um, I spoke with Mr. Bear yesterday about this. It's in the very early stages of planning, but, um, the town of With, or downtown Withville, um, usually has two cruise-ins or car shows and they usually close on Main Street to have those. And they are looking for a different area so that they don't have to close on Main Street. They have a few reasons why that's not working out so well for them. So they have a couple of sponsors. One of them is State Farm, Tommy Hunley, and the other, um, is the brewery, Seven Dogs. So they came to me and asked if, if I would speak to Mr. Bear about possibly using our three parking lots right here, ours and then like in front of Social Services and down. Um, they don't have dates set, but they just wanted to see if that might be an option. And I didn't know if it would be an issue to any of those supervisors. Mr. Bear said he would talk to the judges and, you know, they would have their own cleanup crew. We would have to make sure of that and.
It would be Saturday, obviously.
It would be Saturday, it would, um.
The main thing I said was if, If Withville has much more staff and, and we, we know what it's like cleaning up after Chautauqua when everybody uses our parking lot. Uh, the only thing I would ask is if they would have their staff, because you know people are going to leave drinks and things around here, if they would have their staff cleaning up, I'd check with the judge and make certain he has no objection to using it as well.
And I don't know of any agency. The, the lower parking lot, um, juvenile or juvenile intake probation, juvenile probation, I think they've, I think they have a state vehicle they park there and.
Dispatch would need a few spots because we, we get dispatches probably in places or, or wicked stuff. We could probably split, you know, a couple of their vehicles there, state vehicles there.
Yeah, I'm sure we can make, bring it to them for a reasonable rate.
And they were talking about using the, um, parking lots for the, for the vehicles that, that would actually be in the car show and that way they wouldn't have to close the street down. Then they would have something over in, uh, Mr. Hunley's parking lot and then down at the brewery. So, and that, and they don't have dates set. It would just be once in, um, June, depending on if there is Chautauqua this year, which I haven't heard. It would be around that because they also have a car show, so, and then once in August. So if you all don't have any, um, any issues with it, Mr. Bear can kind of, um, check with the judges and we can kind of go from there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McRoberts?
I have a couple of issues I'd like to have over here. I, I.
You're welcome. So we're working on one of them.
And you know you're welcome to throw some over to Mr. Hankins over now. He gets a little jealous. Mr. Horni?
I don't believe I have anything at this time.
Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman. I want to comment on what Ms. Lawson shared. This isn't anything I've not said on social media, but elections have consequences. And when you put liberal idiots in leadership positions, what you wind up with is what we're dealing with right now. The town of Withville leadership has no consideration of our citizens. If they won't host a couple of events a year to support the community, that's sad. And I want that on record. That's where I stand. That's, that's where we're at as a community. Everybody talks about unity. It's unified if it's committed, if it's convenient for them, and that just really rubs me the wrong way. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair. I don't want to get on my soapbox.
Yeah, I've stayed off mine tonight. I've had a couple of complaints about the recycling center in gravel and I think that was, that was addressed the morning, can't even remember. Yeah, Sleep Springs, Greens. That's all I've got. And, and we've got, um, listed on here, we have the budget focus and priorities. Is that something we need to go over tonight or?
I'll leave it up to you all. I mean, I welcome you all. You all can send me some emails of any budget focus and priorities that you all have if you would like. Obviously in March, we'll have lots of time together to, to do it. But, uh, you know, I'm trying to keep you up, give you some updates on some of the things that we have going on, uh, that's out there. But if there's anything in particular, uh, I know Landmine Rescue Squad building, um, and Bear Springs Community Center building is one of the things that, that we've got, uh, going on out there. We've got some, um, you know, we're looking at. Um, we've got some, um, you know, we're looking at personnel issues, how we're handling personnel issues. You know, we're getting this, Hankins is still getting all the stuff in on the CIP, but we have some projects like the playground and things out there that are being looked at. Ms. Lawson's talked before about trying to come up with blue wake trails and things like that. You know, and it's obviously will be dependent on where we are financially with the budget. Revenue Committee will be meeting next week, uh, to look at the numbers from this, uh, win, where we are through half the year, and what's coming in, and as we start making our projections. Uh, we'll put on a little more about one of their targets. If there's any items in particular that you're wanting to fill in the budget or anything, let me know, and I'll make certain I'm working with staff to try to come up with.
And and that was, excuse me, um, that, and the reason I ask that, I I was going to say this before, but, uh, you know, we had the work session on on the broadband last week. Again, thanks to Mr. Hankins and everybody who's involved in that. Um, it it was, I joke about the speed of government, but that really come to get it quick. Um, I I hope we're pursuing any type of funding, and I know we talked about the putting out the request, the qualification, but, you know, I took that study home and and read it, and the the comments, how many every pages they were, and they ran the gamut. You know, um, but it it was really, everybody knows we've got a connectivity issue, not just in Withville County, but Southwest Virginia as a whole. And and I want to touch on one thing that Mr. Hankins said is, you know, based on that study and and, um, the maps and everything. I think we've got a chance to really set the bar in Southwest Virginia as far as, you know, affordable, reliable broadband internet.
Yes, sir.
Now, with that said, I I agree with some of the comments. I don't want to put a lot of tax money into, as long as they're state and federal grant. But, um, you know, sometimes you're you're your own worst enemy, and I know we're in the process of hiring a grant writer, but, um, if Mr. Hankins could whip this out and and get this awarded, I have the utmost faith that he'll stay on top. Funding opportunities. You know.
You shouldn't mention how awesome you are at this thing. We're going to expect a lot.
And going back to.
We'll face it hard as we can.
And going back to the comments, we all know the school system and and education is brought to to the forefront, but I honestly didn't realize how many people had, were trying to operate businesses out of their homes. And, you know, a lot of them must like to live in the country because, you know, some of the comments, you know, of having to drive to town to then steal Wi-Fi from a fast food restaurant to to upload pictures. I mean, that's, uh, so you talk about budget priorities, and again, like I said, I I agree with some of them. You don't want to spend a lot of tax money, but, you know, those towers he talked about, we can reach eighty-eight, or a little over eighty-eight percent of our our citizens. And, um, I don't know of anything else we can do. Um, you know, going back to water, I don't know if we'll ever reach eighty-eight percent of the population of Withville County with with public water, so.
The proposal that they present, I mean, it it's the most economical way without running buried fiber or fiber on poles to everywhere, because we've got a lot of areas that you just can't get there easily. Uh, and this, this provides the best opportunity to do it. And I think it a hundred percent depends on having heavily matched grant and federal funds to do it, which fortunately, we're in a time where there's a lot of money going towards that.
Well, and and I've said it before, um, regardless of your opinion of of the governor, he has put a lot of money out there for that, so, um. Let's try to get our part, so. Anybody else have anything? Mr. Barrett?
The, I I will just mention, um, I'd I'd share with you all a lot about the cigarette taxation and where we are on that. Uh, we, our entire Mount Rogers PDC region is pretty much in agreement that they would like to go with your regional approach. I am working with a VACO representative of helping us with setting up the regional approach on that. Uh, we've gotten the information from the Northern Virginia Community Tax Board, and we are looking at moving forward with, um, uh, an attorney, uh, to help Mount Rogers PDC be the lead organization in setting all of this up. Um, it, uh, it will cost us some upfront money in the process of setting this up, but it will be the most economical way to handle that, um, going forward for our localities. And even some of the towns that are in the area that have taxes, think they would be interested in joining into this regional approach for the accountability and tracking that it gives in the process, and being able to go under one, one seal. So Withville County lobbied hard for many years at the legislators to, uh, to be able to to have the same rights of cities and towns to be able to implement this. And now we're trying to find ways to effectively implement it and efficiently implement it and save taxpayers dollars in the process. So we will continue moving forward with that process of trying to get everything lined up, um, for you all, for your consideration.
Didn't, I got an email here about that the, uh, requirement for the regional board is no longer mandatory.
That is correct. Uh, Mr. Hankins followed that closely, and I'll let him comment on it if he'd like, but, uh, they did take that away.
So is it?
We spent a lot of time working on that last week. Um, if you see Senator Pillion, thank him and and his staff for their work. Um, Senator Hanger wanted to make it mandatory that you have at least ten localities participate in a regional board. We thought that number should be smaller, i- if you're going to make that requirement, particularly for, you know, areas like Southwest Virginia. York County, on the other side of Virginia, had a similar problem, surrounded by cities, can't put enough localities together. So that ultimately is what brought about the change in in the legislation. Now they just say that they strongly recommend it, and they're asking the Department of Taxation to figure out how to modernize the cigarette taxing structure.
So is it, is it to our benefit to be in a region or by ourselves?
I would strongly suggest it's to your best benefit to be in a region. Um, you you get economies of scale, you you get, you know, uh, single administration instead of having all these different localities with their own treasurers and, uh, com- uh, commissioner of revenues working on, you know, taxation for cigarettes. You have one body that distributors can work with, and I think that's going to make the process a whole lot simpler and smoother.
And and I think, you know, the the ten localities in Southwest Virginia, you know, that's a huge area, and you, especially when you've got towns, some towns don't have tags or not interested, you know, whatever, but, um. You know, we looked at the map, and and you look at going to Lee County from Withville, there ain't no good way to get there, take a hole up, so.
And that's why I was wondering about the region thing, because, I mean, when you look at our truck stops and stuff, we probably sell more cigarettes than any counties around here, so.
Well, and and but if you pick up Bland County, who's got, you know, one truck stop, that's a lot for them to have full-time employees, so I I think it's. I just didn't want to finance the rest of the counties.
Yeah, let let me, let me clarify that.
It's going, it's going to be, uh, it's going to be even.
It's, the the, the revenue is not shared. The revenue comes back to each locality as it is. The costs are shared among all localities, and the costs are shared based on the number of packs you sold. So if we sold fifty percent of the packs of cigarettes, Carol sold thirty percent, and Bland sold twenty percent, and that's the only three that are in our group, we would pay fifty, fifty percent of the cost of managing that. The tax revenue we would get will be based on our rate. Now generally, all the localities are wanting to set the same rate, which the maximum rate you can set is forty cents per pack, uh, for the cigarettes. And all the localities are talking that they would like to set the same rate. But basically, no matter what that rate is, we would get our money back for our fifty percent packs of cigarettes, whether it's ten cents a pack, twenty cents a pack, or forty cents a pack, would come back to us. It is not sharing regional revenue. Very good, very good point, but yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, I'm gonna stay. I see what you're saying now.
Yeah.
Yes. Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
Uh, no, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Mr. Hankins?
We had briefly talked about doing, uh, a personnel issue, but I don't know that we need to do that tonight.
Don't need, um. CPA, Public Information Officer? If y'all want to talk about it briefly, we can. It won't take five minutes.
Uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session under?
Two point two thirty-seven eleven A one Personnel, uh, Public Information Officer.
So moved. Have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, closed session.
Me and Cory, we want to go home.
Aye.
Mr. Farley, are you ready?
That means you. If you'll, if you'll read the certification.
Angela, certification of public information, Oregon, Withville County Board Supervisor, that convening the closed meeting, we'll take the two and a hundred and forty, but we had an accord with the Virginia Freedom Movement. For exception, people three, seven, twelve, or two, to get further, they trust the taking, but Withville County Board Supervisor, that such meeting, that's the court, it was in the law. Now therefore, these are all that Withville County Board Supervisor, given by certified, that is basically ten of knowledge, on, only for the business matters, also the interest of open meeting requirements of junior loans, discussing both people to which the service can be reduced by. Only since public business matters, we were then about in the motion, convening the closed meeting, or heard, discussed, or considered, by the Withville County Board Supervisor. And I make the motion that.
Have, have a motion to ratify the resolution. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, do a roll call vote, all, or roll call vote, Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Martin, you have anything? Mr. Hankins? Ms. Collins? Here now, it'll be a recess until.
Will you take a motion to do recess, Mr. Chairman?
Do what?
Will you, we get a motion to go into recess?
I almost said that, but I heard you, you were on the last one.
Entertain a motion to recess until February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at five thirty P M. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now in recess.